Good evening and welcome to the June 18th, 2024, meeting of the Lower Merion Board of Commissioners. We have a lot of exciting things this evening. The first thing, it's a wonderful thing to start with, will be the badge ceremony for Superintendent Block. So Superintendent Block is already here in the Oval. I'd like to invite Vice President Kramer, Manager McNeely, Commissioner Bernheim, Commissioner Rosman, please join me in the Oval for the ceremony.
So good evening, everyone, and I'd like to start with a few words from Manager McNeely. Good evening, and we are really thrilled to have our new Superintendent Andy Block. In a short time, we've had him already. But just to remind you how we got here, we conducted a national search using a national search firm. We saw candidates from all over the country, 59 of them to start. We narrowed that down through a process and came to eight finalists. Six were from around the Philadelphia area and two were from out of state. But in the end, we are so very pleased to have landed on somebody who has lived their entire life in Lower Merion Township, is a Lower Merion Township resident, has excellent qualifications, 38 years of experience as a police officer, 28 in neighbor Radnor Township, and we are so glad to welcome Andy Block as our new superintendent.
Thank you, Ernie, and thanks to all of you for joining us this evening for the badge ceremony for Superintendent Andrew Block. I'd like to recognize the many, many people who have come here this evening to celebrate Andy's taking the oath of Superintendent to the Lower Merion Police Department. I see a number of Chiefs of Police. I see an amazing number of people from our fire services and from our EMT services. I think I saw District Attorney Kevin Steele here. There he is. Hi, Kevin. Yeah. I know that most of you are here to honor Andy, and after just a couple of weeks working with him, I see why. I'll add that based on the number of times someone has told me "good job" about hiring Andy. It appears to be far and away the single best thing that this township has done since I became Commissioner on this board, and it might very well be. Tonight, the swearing-in and badge ceremony for Andrew Block indeed is a momentous occasion. Andy, you are just the 12th Superintendent of Police since Lower Merion became a first-class township in 1900. In 1900, speeding was enforced by stopwatch, not by radar, so some things have not changed. Now, the Superintendent salary in 1900 was $660 a year, so that has changed, fortunately for you. But anyway, we do not appoint superintendents very often, and it is an important decision. Our superintendents serve a long time, typically well more than a decade, and they play an important role in this township. Our police department with 154 full-time employees, it's by itself bigger than most entire townships. Andy is responsible for more than one-third of the township's staff and 40% or so of the township's budget. Police services and how the police department is run is central to Lower Merion Township. When it comes to policing, I believe that our Board of Commissioners has one singular goal, which is to have the best possible police department. I'm glad that tonight, we will add to our array of amazing officers, command staff and police department staff, with a swearing-in of an outstanding superintendent. As Ernie said, Andy is a leader. He's a doer, a motivator, a communicator, and an absolutely genuine guy. I am thrilled that he has dedicated his life to service and that he will be doing so as our Superintendent of Police. Congratulations and thank you. So next, to say a few words, is Commissioner Lewis Rosman.
Thank you. Well, I can stand back here, just in case. I think at 21 feet. Andy, I have walked with you through Norbert. We only walked one block, but you knew everyone. Everyone knew you. I felt like I was the star standing next to you. You're a local boy who's made the big time, and the big time is tonight. Really proud of you. I am so proud to have you as a superintendent, role model, leader, and mentor to all those in your department. You have an infectious smile. You light the room up when you walk in. Come on, show it. You can show it to them. He had a wet handshake tonight, but we'll forgive him tonight on that one. Your education and background brings a high level of competence to our township. I want to ask you, what is your greatest attribute? You said you live life by the golden rule: do unto others as they do to you. And I must say that I am... I ask, what more do we want from a police superintendent? I'm old enough to be your parents' age, and I can tell you tonight that they're looking down and they're really proud.
Next to say a few words is Commissioner Dan Bernheim.
Thank you, and it truly is an honor to participate in this ceremony this evening. I think of all the things that we do as a municipality, as a township, probably the most important is public safety, and that is primarily police and fire. And probably the most important thing that we can do under that category is the selection of our chief fire officer or our superintendent in police. And as Ernie mentioned, when we started the process, we did it with a reputable firm that made a national search, and there were a number of extraordinarily highly qualified people that had put in their bid and were interviewed and processed. And when it circled back to those of us who knew Andy, and we heard that the number-one draft choice was Andy Block, those of us, such as myself, who've dealt with them with the Gladwin Fire Company and elsewhere, our reaction was, of course. In our backyard, here it was, our next superintendent. And those who know Andy, respect him, hold him in the highest regard. And those who don't, and I address those who are in the police force, you are going to find out why they do so very, very quickly. So it is absolutely, as I started saying, it is an honor and a privilege to be able to be part of this ceremony here this evening. And if I can go out on a limb and give one piece of advice, just be yourself. We will all benefit so much by that. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Rosman and Bernheim are going to be banished back to the dais. And while they're walking there, he snuck in thinking I wouldn't see him, but I see County Commissioner... Okay, so with that, Judge Shatterston will join us here.
I think before we begin, I'd like to say a couple of words. I've been in office for 40 years. I've sworn in countless police officers. I've sworn in two superintendents, one of whom is here this evening. It's been a great honor and a pleasure for me to do that. I've had... I don't believe, I would say to the Commissioners, you've ever made a better decision than to choose Andy Block. I've known him for many years, I think the world of him. What makes our justice system work, above all things, I've learned in my 40 years in office, is the esteem with which most people, in which most people hold, police and courts. That's the criminal justice system's secret. True respect for law is promoted by our integrity, our impartiality, our sense of fair play, our conscientious attention to duty, and yes, simple courtesy. I know Andy is a person who embodies these qualities, someone who is genuinely caring, humble, and has an unwavering sense of duty and love of public service. We couldn't ask for more in a police superintendent. Although he worked for decades in other townships, he never left Lower Merion. His mother was a respected court clerk in the Ardmore Court, and I knew Mary Block, a lovely, kind person, and very competent, like her son. Andy was, as you all know, a stalwart volunteer in the fire service all these years. You might say he bleeds Lower Merion. I have no doubt that he'll meet the challenge, and it's really an honor for me to administer his oath of office. Thank you.
I ask Andy's sister Danielle Block to please come forward with the Bible.
Please repeat after me. I, Andrew J. Block, do solemnly swear...
I, Andrew J. Block, do solemnly swear...
...that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States...
...and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
That I will enforce the laws impartially, without regard to race, creed, or color.
I will enforce the laws impartially, without regard to race, creed, or color.
That I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservations or purpose of evasion.
I take this obligation freely, without any reservation of mental...
Reservations or purpose of evasion. I'm sorry to... And finally, that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office...
I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office...
...of police officer of the township of Lower Merion...
Of police officer of the township of Lower Merion.
...and Norbert Borough...
And Norbert Borough.
...acting to the best of my ability.
Acting to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Superintendent.
I'd like to ask Sergeant Brady McHale from the Radnor Township Police Department to please come for the badge ceremony. And I get to hand this microphone over to Vice President Sean Kramer.
Well, Andy, it seems like people like you. Everywhere, literally everywhere I've gone in the past couple of weeks, people have told me, you know, you really knocked it out of the park in bringing Andy Block on board. You're so lucky. He's kind to the core and treats everyone with dignity and respect. People that you wouldn't necessarily guess, you know, that I wouldn't know had any connection to you, you know, jumping over chairs and stuff to shake my hand and tell me that we're that lucky. And in fact, a couple of weeks ago, I was, there I was in the Acme parking lot, and a young man walked up to me and said, "Commissioner, Commissioner." And it was Brady, and he said, "Boy, you know, you guys really, really did a good job picking this guy. He's the best." He mentored me, and he said, "He's a couple of miracles away from sainthood." Right? So no pressure. But Andy, we're really just so glad to have you, and I know that you're already just terrific to work with, and everything that everybody said about you is true. You're really carrying it forward in the everyday work that you're doing. I'm so happy for the department to have you and for you to have them. It's a great group of people, and I think, you know, we're going to see great things. So with that, I'll turn things over to this guy.
Thank you all for attending this evening, and I want to thank our Board of Commissioners and Township Manager Ernie McNeely for choosing me, selecting me for this very, very sacred position within law enforcement to lead this phenomenal police department, the Lower Merion Township Police Department. I am truly humbled and grateful for everything that you've done for me thus far as the Commissioners and the leadership with the township, and I will not let you down, and I will not let our citizens down, nor will I let our fine officers of the Police Department, the Lower Merion Police Department, down. You know, how did you get here? How did I get here? We've heard a lot of stories tonight, and I thank you very much for that. Again, I'm very humbled by everybody's comments. But I do have to recognize several people this evening. I wouldn't be standing here if it wasn't for their mentorship and their leadership over the years. And it actually starts back when I was 16 years old and I joined Norbert Ambulance, and there was a core group of individuals down there that we're all life members now, and John Decker's here, he was one of the chiefs that started my career in public safety, and we were held to a high level of accountability, and that accountability is still here today because of those values that were instilled in myself and the other volunteers in Norbert Ambulance. I knew I wanted to be a police officer at a very young age. My mother and father, who have gone before me, knew that all along, and they supported me to this endeavor, to get into this career, which is just the most unbelievable career that anyone could be involved in in this profession. I was very fortunate at a young age that I was hired by the Radnor Township Police Department, and Superintendent Rudd is here this evening. He was one of the mentors that brought me up through the ranks and trained me implicitly, and I wouldn't be here this evening if it wasn't for his leadership in all the years that I worked with Radnor. In addition to that, Chief Collarulo's here, who took over. My last five years, I was in Radnor, and again, with his, under his leadership, I grew in the profession itself. Once I left Radnor, I had a lot of opportunities, and I made friends, some great friends in Upper Marlin Township who are here this evening. They invested in me four and a half years ago, and I'm forever grateful for the experiences that they extended to me and the leadership that I had with the Police Department. It's a fine township, they're fine residents, and the Commissioners are just like the Commissioners here, they're 100% supportive of what we do as far as law enforcement is. Now, most importantly is the Lower Merion Police Department, the command staff's here tonight, there are several officers in the room. I'm humbled to be able to serve with you and next to you. It's a standard of excellence that this Police Department has established many, many, many years ago, and we're going to continue that excellence, and it's serving the community. That's what the goal is here, all right? The community is our aim, to serve them under any circumstances, what they may be. The professionalism, integrity, and respect are the core values of the Police Department, and I carry those same core values. My good friends and colleagues and my peers are here from the Montgomery County Police Chiefs Association. There's not a finer group of individuals that are out there as far as the peer group. So we're in this together, we work together. When somebody has an issue, you can pick the phone up, and they're there to provide support and answers for you, as well as our District Attorney Kevin Steele. It's all about working the team for our communities, making our community safe. We're very, very fortunate for that. My family is here this evening, I thank them all. They have followed me throughout my career, and I'm blessed that they're here this evening to share this unbelievable experience and the next step in my career. Lastly, I want to talk about the Gladwin Fire Company, which is very near and dear to my heart. As somebody said earlier, that I bleed Lower Merion, I also bleed Gladwin Red. They're here this evening, and it's been an honor and a pleasure for the last 35 years to serve with them and also as the former chief of the fire company. It's a family. It's just like your personal family, our fire companies and our police officers, it's all about family and maintaining those values. I also look forward to working with our regional police chiefs here, Chief John Violis here this evening, and Superintendent Flanagan from Radnor Township, as well as Lieutenant Blaine Lees from Upper Marlin Township, who also wears two hats. He is currently the chief of the Gladwin Fire Company. But it's truly an honor to be sworn in this evening as your Superintendent for the Lower Merion Township Police Department, and I am here for you. I'm at your service in the community service 24 hours a day. There's just one thing I want to address, and it's with Chief Jim McCoy. Chief Jim McCoy and I grew up together, and I think at this point, we went to Saint Mathias, we're two Balla Cambridge boys, one from Stradon Road and one from Rock Hill Road, and I think there's some Mercy Sisters that are turning over in their graves right now that these two... These two Balla boys are now running the fire department and the police department, so it's a tremendous success story. So again, I thank everybody for taking time out of your evening to come here, and I wish you all the best, and most importantly, please stay safe. That's the most important thing, stay safe and well. Thank you very much, Commissioner.
So I'm going to ask that you stay in the room for a moment while the Honor Guard processes out. Color Guard, sorry. Thank you, everyone, for joining us this evening. We're going to now turn to the regular business of the Board of Commissioners meeting. You're welcome to stay if you want to.
Thank you very much, and I really appreciate it.
Hey, it's you.
Who keeps hitting the lights?
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate you.
I know, right? You did a really good job.
Okay, "play to the crowd."
What'd you say?
I said, "I play to the crowd."
Hey, nice to meet you.
I see you all the time.
Yeah, thanks, thanks for coming to say hi. What's your connection? How do you know Andy?
I heard him first.
Well, we appreciate you.
I'm glad you got them lights under control. I said, "This ain't normal, this ain't part of the...
Well, that was actually...
Yes, Gilbert High. Nice to see you.
Is it working? Is it functioning?
It took a...
Your wife said check.
Two and a half hours. Got a magnolia tree in the front yard, and three years ago, they had a...
A nice ceremony. Sounds very nice.
You have access to me? Yeah, just launchpad. Oh, yeah, sure. It's okay, I didn't name names. I didn't think we were still...
Still the Jewish.
I tell you, when that happens, it's a hell of a...
Yeah. That's right, that's right. The daily work is very important.
Yeah.
So if I can ask anyone remaining to make their way out of the room. Okay, so welcome to the remaining part of the June 18th, 2024 Lower Merion Board of Commissioners meeting. Before we start the rest of the meeting, please silence your cell phones. It is less needed right now, but there is amplifying equipment available for those who are hearing impaired. We also have telecoil technology in the room, and when the floor is open for public comment, the practice of the boards take public comment from those who are here physically in the room before we turn to those attending virtually, in that we ask that you introduce yourself and... August, will be held on Monday, August 5th, 2024, at approximately 7:00 PM. Now, June is also Pride Month, and in honor of that, a few commissioners would like to make, say if you worked, I'm going to start with Commissioner Epstein.
I'm very proud to go first, and I'm proud to speak up in support and recognition of June as Pride Month. This topic hits me a little differently than some of the more routine items of governance because it is an issue of human rights. This hits me as a mother, as a friend, and as a human who is concerned about the hate I see and hate that has no place here or anywhere. I'm proud of my child, I'm proud of your children, I'm proud of anyone and everyone who lives openly, unapologetically, and beautifully as their whole selves. The world doesn't make that easy. If you have been to any Pride event, and I commend the youth that ran the one in Norbert this past weekend, you know it celebrates love for oneself and for others as they are. That is, in my opinion, as unobjectionable as anything, anything you can get. It's a platform of supporting the health and happiness of those who simply ask to be seen, so I was a little surprised that we had some objections to doing so. I don't think anyone would disagree that on this board and the staff offices of the building, out and about in the township, we've set the intention that we are an inclusive community and that all residents and visitors are welcome. I don't believe anyone sitting here or working here is looking to exclude. My concern is that unless you consciously include, you will unconsciously exclude. Neutrality is not enough. As a teacher, this was something I consistently reflected on and worked on, and as people who are compassionate, I don't think that work is ever done. I know our board can do more, and I believe we should. To my fellow commissioners, I challenge us to take time between now and next June to move forward in showing our unqualified support for the LGBTQ+ community in an official and tangible way. These are our constituents, our friends, and our family members whose rights we need to affirm and protect. I hope we can change some of your minds. You haven't known me for long, but you should know I promise I won't stop trying all year, so get used to this, and thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Epstein. Next is Commissioner Crimmer.
In 2024, our country is still polarized over people's sexual orientation, something that I simply cannot fathom. People are who they are and should be loved and accepted as they are. It is not enough that our Lower Merion Township Human Relations Commission was created in 2010, in part to address the fact that at that time, no federal or state laws provided employment protections to LGBTQ members of our community. While our ordinance provides critical protections to those who live and work in our township, members of our LGBTQ community still do not have statewide legal employment protections and are not fully accepted. Only a few years ago, a former president barred transgender people from serving in the military, and there currently are nationwide efforts to deny them important medical care. In the name of religious liberty, our Supreme Court has said that some services can be denied to those who are LGBTQ. This is really no different than racism or antisemitism and has no place in our community. Today, I am making a personal statement in honor of Pride Month. Next year, I hope that this board will show our township's pride in our LGBTQ community and issue a unanimous statement for Pride Month.
Thank you, Commissioner Kramer. Commissioner Woodring.
Thank you, Mr. President. Why don't I say I recommend to show my support for the LGBTQ+ community and for my fellow commissioners who are very passionate about the celebration of this specific community. The best part about our positions as commissioners is that we get to meet constituents from all walks of life. The fact that we have such diversity in this township is a beautiful thing, and that should be recognized. During Pride Month, we absolutely should be celebrating the members of the LGBTQ+ community in our township. And while the Human Relations Commission was established to help us combat discrimination, we as commissioners should be raising the voices of our constituents as well. And so by celebrating Pride Month, we reaffirm our commitment to being inclusive, to respect, and to love for all individuals. Therefore, again, I echo my support for the community and stand with my fellow commissioners who speak and support this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Woodring. Vice President Crimmer.
Thank you. You all have said it better than I could, so I'll just be, I'll be brief. I truly hope that everyone in our community, and in particular during this Pride Month, members of the LGBTQ community here in Lower Merion feel welcomed and valued and seen. And if you, if you don't, please tell us, we're listening and we want to keep doing better. And the last thing I'll say is that for all the kids out there who are probably not watching Lower Merion Township Television, let's hope, but just to get the message out there for you kids that are queer, trans, struggling and feeling excluded, we love you, we see you, and it's, it's going to get better.
Thank you, Vice President Kramer. This month, Pride Month, which is dedicated to the uplifting of LGBTIQ voices and a celebration of LGBTIQ culture, has me thinking about what pride means here in Lower Merion. You know, even leaving aside how we personally identify, many of us have LGBTIQ friends, relatives, children, loved ones, that we love and we support, each in our own way. And we believe in supporting LGBTIQ rights, inclusion, and equality, and could not imagine living in one of the many municipalities across the country where those rights are under attack. Indeed, that would be antithetical to Lower Merion, where we have pioneering anti-discrimination ordinances. So, so, so what does, or what might pride mean in Lower Merion? So here's something that this board said not so long ago, in a different context, but it reflects my views about it now. In Lower Merion, we stand firm in defense of our values, peace and kindness rather than violence and hatred, understanding rather than distrust, being welcoming to all persons, regardless of faith, race, creed, background, sexual orientation, or anything really. That seems about right. We often say these things when groups have been attacked in our township. We should probably say it more often than that. We have common goals of equality and acceptance. We strive to live up to them. If Lower Merion had a policy about this, what would it say? I think it would say, "Be kind." It would say, "Be accepting." It would say, "Don't presume to know what it's like to walk in someone else's shoes, but stand ready to help them walk in their own, no matter what that may be." I'm happy to be in a township that I believe in its DNA supports all people, and especially the LGBTIQ community, and I'm happy to celebrate here in Pride Month. With that, we have a bit of sad news. I'm sad to say that Gloria Wallach, who is longtime Ward, former Ward Five Commissioner, passed away recently, she was 90 years old. Gloria served on the Lower Merion Board of Commissioners for 20 years, describing herself as a full-time commissioner. She was the first female president to the board, a position she took over in 1995. Before that, she chaired the Finance Committee for 14 years, and prior to being on the Board of Commissioners, she was active with the League of Woman Voters where she was president. As board president, her priority issues then, as now, were traffic congestion, traffic safety, and open space. She was, by all accounts, a dedicated citizen of Lower Merion. Please join me in standing and observing a moment of silence for Gloria Wallach. Thank you. So this and now the section of our meeting where members of the public may address the board on any non-agenda items or any other public matters in which the township has jurisdiction or authority. I'm going to ask you to come to this podium up here, state your name before addressing the board, and we ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. If there's a group of people who are here speaking on the same topic, and you designate one representative, we'll give you five minutes. We're going to start with people in the room, and just so you're aware, it's a policy of this board that we wait to respond to comments until we've heard from all, heard all comments, those in the room and people who are attending virtually. Anyone in the room who should take advantage of public privilege, please come forward.
Good evening, I'm speaking, I'm happy to recruit, so five minutes?
Good evening, Board of Commissioners. My name is Jason Landau Goodman, and I'm a lifelong resident of Lower Merion from Ballack Kinwood. I'm also a civil rights advocate and attorney. I've known many of you for over a decade. Starting when I was a teenager, I helped spearhead the nondiscrimination ordinance and helped with its unanimous passage, which was a historic local law protecting LGBTQ people from discrimination. We became the first municipality in Montgomery County to do so and the first township in the entire Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to do it. We were a leader on something that many have seen as controversial nearly 15 years ago, but now I'm so proud of this body for doing so. I've mostly taken this work on the road since 2010, helping dozens of other communities across the state address LGBTQ civil rights protection. We've seen the world change for the better and for the more challenging. We won major gains through laws and policies but have also experienced serious setbacks with anti-LGBTQ forces coming out strong. Just last night, I was in rural, rural school district in Lancaster County to witness their school board's vote on contracting to the law firm to develop anti-trans student policies. Pride Month displays in Bradford County and Berks County have been vandalized this year. These are common events in PA now, but not here. With all the progress, we have helped save lives, but LGBTQ people, particularly LGBTQ youth, remain under attack. That's why the statistics are so horrifying regarding the reality for young LGBTQ people in our communities, especially when it comes to mental health and suicidality. We have thousands of LGBT residents in Lower Merion who deserve your attention on their concerns. Signs of affirmation are indeed essential, whether they are statements and resolutions, electronic media like the Pride Month graphics on the Lower Merion School District website, or visible signs like an in-person flag raising. They show the world that at least here, at least in this municipality, people are saying that you are loved and supported. Oftentimes, people will make a statement of public support without doing the work. In our case in Lower Merion, we have done the work in passing the ordinance, but yet we're not able to promote ourselves as being a beacon of inclusion. When I speak about my life journey at events, I always say how lucky I am that I grew up in Lower Merion and how proud I am to have done, have been, been here. Though, I also mention that in a world before marriage equality, there was essentially zero visibility of LGBTQ people in Lower Merion as a younger person, whether at Lower Merion schools or in community spaces. It felt as though Lower Merion's silence on LGBTQ inclusion was a statement in itself, and while not intending to be negative or positive, it indeed was a net negative. It is my hope that one day Lower Merion Township as a local government can issue a statement observing Pride Month, supporting Pride Month events, supporting communities within our larger community as dozens of others do every day. I implore you, please take this next year to draft and adopt a policy on how to deal with requests for community recognition, whether from the public or from a member of the Board of Commissioners, including resolutions formally supporting events for LGBTQ Pride Month, Juneteenth, Earth Month, or Disability Pride Month. This is one of the most common practices from many governments, including our state government and our county government. You indeed have the power to do this. It is a political decision to do nothing, even a resolution, which is not acceptable. Out of the 10, 12 largest municipalities in the state, we are one of two that has doing nothing for Pride Month. Abington, West Norton, and Upper Darby Townships, all townships of the first class, have been flying the LGBTQ pride flag for years during Pride Month. We have not seen them experience the parade of horribles with lawsuits. Upper Darby Township even allows Delaware County Pride for two years in a row now to take place on their doorstep around the Township Administration Building grounds. Ross Township in Allegheny County is a first-class township and just held their first Pride Festival this year at the Township Community Center. I know flags can be complicated following the US Supreme Court case in Shertley v. Boston. As I understand it, that case rested on the public requesting use of the flagpole, so it was not government speech. The government itself, its speech, citizens electing you to make political positions, you can make decisions on your own for resolutions on topics of your choosing. I do not want the takeaway to be, I just talked about flags tonight, though. I share the following with you to urge you to do something. In addition to Abington and West Norton Township, West Norton and Townships in Montgomery County, Upper Dublin School Districts have flown the pride flag every year since 2019. Lower Gwinnett Township, Upper Gwinnett Township, Upper Moreland Township, Whitpain Township, East Norton Township, Amblerboro, Jenkentown Borough, and Montgomery County's government itself have flown the pride flag this year. Just this morning, I attended the Juneteenth Pride Flag Ceremony in Norristown. In closing, tonight, please state your support for looking into an ordinance or a resolution for how you are to neutrally consider broadly-supported public positions of inclusion. Working with the township solicitor, I'm sure you can craft a policy or practice that both passes constitutional muster in supporting statements of inclusion and ensures that this board is never compelled to celebrate a hate group or statements of exclusion. I believe we can figure this out in Lower Merion if you want to. I believe you can set the standard for other municipalities to follow, as you've done on the nondiscrimination ordinance those years ago, if you truly desire it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room who should take advantage of public privilege?
Yeah.
Please come to this podium.
Good evening, congratulations on your new hire. My name is Robert Ort. I live on Airedale Road in Brinmar, directly across from Ashbridge Park, and I'm here with my neighbors Matt Gutierrez and Jeff Polkris. Airedale Road neighbors and Ashbridge Park users, they attend here to express really our utter disbelief and frustration about exclusion from notification of the Pickleball Court project until the construction began. We have felt abandoned by key township participants who seem unwilling to realistically give us the information. We have felt abandoned by key township participants who seem unwilling to realistically give us the information. We have felt abandoned by key township participants who seem unwilling to realistically give us the information. We have felt abandoned by key township participants who seem unwilling to realistically give us the information. We have felt abandoned by key township participants who seem unwilling to realistically give us the information. We have felt abandoned by key township participants who seem unwilling to realistically give us the information. We have felt abandoned by key township participants who seem unwilling to realistically give us the information. We have felt abandoned by key township participants who seem unwilling to realistically give us the information. We have felt abandoned by key township participants who seem unwilling to realistically give us the information. We have felt abandoned by key township participants who seem unwilling to realistically give us the information. We have felt abandoned by key township participants who seem unwilling to realistically give us the information. We have felt abandoned by key township participants who seem unwilling to realistically give us the information. We have felt abandoned by key township participants who seem unwilling to realistically give us the information. We have felt abandoned by key township participants who seem unwilling to realistically give us the information. We have felt abandoned by key township participants who seem unwilling to realistically give us the information. We have felt abandoned by key township participants who seem unwilling to realistically give us the information. We have felt abandoned by key township participants who seem unwilling to realistically give us the information. We have felt abandoned by key township participants who seem unwilling to realistically give us the information. We have felt abandoned by key township participants who seem unwilling to realistically give us the information. We have felt abandoned by key township participants who seem unwilling to realistically give us the information. We have felt abandoned by key township participants who seem unwilling to realistically give us the information. We have felt abandoned by key township participants who seem unwilling to realistically give us the information. We have felt abandoned by key township participants who seem unwilling to realistically give us the information. We have felt abandoned by key township participants who seem unwilling to realistically give us the information. We have felt abandoned by key township participants who seem unwilling to realistically give us the information. We have felt abandoned by key township participants who seem unwilling to realistically give us the information. We have felt abandoned by key township participants who seem unwilling to realistically give us the information. We have felt abandoned by key township participants who seem unwilling to realistically give us the information. We have felt abandoned by key township participants who seem unwilling to realistically give us the information. We have felt abandoned by key township participants who seem unwilling to realistically give us the information. We have felt abandoned by key township participants who seem unwilling to realistically give us the information. We have felt abandoned by key township participants who seem unwilling to realistically give us the information. We have felt abandoned by key township participants who seem unwilling to realistically give us the information. We have felt abandoned by key township participants who seem unwilling to realistically give us the information. We have felt abandoned by key township participants who seem unwilling to realistically give us the information. We have felt abandoned by key township participants who seem unwilling to realistically give us the information. We have felt abandoned by key township participants who seem unwilling to realistically give us the information. We have felt abandoned by key township participants who seem unwilling to realistically give us the information. We have felt abandoned by key township participants who seem unwilling to realistically give us the information. We have felt abandoned by key township participants who seem unwilling to realistically give us the information. We have felt abandoned by key township participants who seem unwilling to realistically give us the information. We have felt abandoned by key township participants who seem unwilling to realistically give us the information. We have felt abandoned by key township participants who seem unwilling to realistically give us the information. We have not seen them experience the parade of horribles with lawsuits. Upper Darby Township even allows Delaware County Pride for two years in a row now to take place on their doorstep around the Township Administration Building grounds. Ross Township in Allegheny County is a first-class township and just held their first Pride Festival this year at the Township Community Center. I know flags can be complicated following the US Supreme Court case in Shertley v. Boston. As I understand it, that case rested on the public requesting use of the flagpole, so it was not government speech. The government itself, its speech, citizens electing you to make political positions, you can make decisions on your own for resolutions on topics of your choosing. I do not want the takeaway to be, I just talked about flags tonight, though. I share the following with you to urge you to do something. In addition to Abington and West Norton Township, West Norton and Townships in Montgomery County, Upper Dublin School Districts have flown the pride flag every year since 2019. Lower Gwinnett Township, Upper Gwinnett Township, Upper Moreland Township, Whitpain Township, East Norton Township, Amblerboro, Jenkentown Borough, and Montgomery County's government itself have flown the pride flag this year. Just this morning, I attended the Juneteenth Pride Flag Ceremony in Norristown. In closing, tonight, please state your support for looking into an ordinance or a resolution for how you are to neutrally consider broadly-supported public positions of inclusion. Working with the township solicitor, I'm sure you can craft a policy or practice that both passes constitutional muster in supporting statements of inclusion and ensures that this Board is never compelled to celebrate a hate group or statements of exclusion. I believe we can figure this out in Lower Marion if you want to. I believe you can set the standard for other municipalities to follow, as you've done on the nondiscrimination ordinance those years ago, if you truly desire it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room wish to take advantage of public privilege?
Yeah.
Please come to this podium.
Good evening. Congratulations on your new hire. My name is Robert Oritt. I live on Airedale Road in Binmar, directly across from Ashbridge Park, and I'm here with my neighbors, Matt Gutierrez and Jeff Polkris. Airedale Road neighbors and Ashbridge Park users, they attend here to express, really, our utter disbelief and frustration about exclusion from notification of the pickleball court project until the construction began. We have felt abandoned by key township participants who seem unwilling to realistically address our looming environmental and financial realities, devastating noise pollution, and a hit on our home values. We would have hoped for better balancing of township needs against our right to quiet enjoyment of our residences. The issue is township-wide and will arise again when more pickleball courts are built, and that doesn't mean we have to hear pins drop, by the way. At this late stage, we hope to get ahead of harmful impacts before they create misery by working with the township to collaborate on the few remaining issues. That's sound mitigation, and how the facility, the pickleball, the four-court pickleball facility will be used. Regarding sound mitigation, we believe there are three approaches to address sound levels. You know that a single court generates 70 decibels of noise. Four courts results in additive noise. First alternative, use of paddles made of materials that are sound-reducing, as well as quieter balls. I'll put that one aside, because I think it's probably not realistic at this point in time, and maybe not for the municipality. Second, deployment of vegetation to reduce noise transmission. We have studied the technical literature on the performance of vegetation in reducing noise. A key point was repeated in our readings, starting with an article indicating that a 16-feet-deep tree belt is required to reduce sound by only 10 decibels. Likewise, a University of Nebraska study reported sound level reductions from 5 to 8 decibels. I woke up without a voice today, I'm sorry. And that, for that being common for wide belts of trees, that is 5 to 8 decibels, that's not a lot. These are problematic numbers. The township can't possibly be intending to plant anywhere near that depth and that density. Its vegetation reduction plan will not succeed at any reasonable standard of protection, and reach only about 2 to 3 decibels reduction. That's also based on our reading. Third alternative, use of sound-absorbing, sound-absorbing blankets, call them curtains, they go by different names, installed on the fencing. There are many options, and for a $250,000 project, they are not costly. They deliver superior sound mitigation, and are by far the pickleball gold standard, widely used. One marketed model absorbs 75% of court sound, court noise generated on a court, and that's using the primary ASTM model for measurement. Curtains are the simplest, most effective solution, which should be pushed hard for installation prior to opening the facility. With alarm, we note that some township pickleball enthusiasts, seemingly with some clout, have communicated dislike of such blankets as interfering with the flow of air on the courts. As a cooperation model, we can point to the experience of Marion.
Sir, that beep was the time, so I'm going to have to ask you to, I said that beep was the time, so I'm going to just have to ask you to finish up.
I am finishing up, that's perfect. We can point to the experience of Marion, which I understand are a few members here. Marion has an ongoing cooperative arrangement with neighbors, which generally result in the clubs needing to take steps to mitigate sound. They have done that. They put pickleball, they put curtains on pickleball courts they've created out of one tennis court, four pickleball courts on one tennis court. We look forward to working with you to resolve these really critical issues for our homeowners. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room wish to take advantage of public privilege? Okay, seeing none, do you have anyone online?
No one has their names.
Okay. So this is a point where it's opportunity for public privilege. I will take the opportunity to, to, opportunity to respond to public privilege, sorry. I'll, I'll respond first. Thank you to everyone who spoke. Thank you very much to Mr. Goodman, and I appreciated everything that you said. The, it is clear from the number of years you've been working on this, and from the tenor of your comments, that you appreciate that it takes, you know, some focus and planning to figure out how to do this right. I think one of the, the, the things that I at least have struggled with since being on this Board is going from these things that you want to do to how you do them, and how do you do them right? And how do you do them in a way that does not leave you exposed to having to do things you don't want to do? So with that, I certainly agree with the idea that, like, we need a better policy, we need a better plan. Vice President Kramer and I have already discussed this, look forward to working on it over the course of the year, but, you know, I think, I think the, we can indeed figure this out in Lower Marion. Thank you. Anyone else? Yeah, Commissioner Bernheim.
Thank you very much, President Sinai, and Mr. Goodman, just got to piggyback on top of that, because I appreciate what you stated and stated it so, so very, very well. And there's always been an issue of what we can do and, you know, how we can treat everybody equally, and that means many of the groups that come forward to us and ask us to do certain things, and I think that's some of the juggling that President Sinai's referencing, who's sat in that seat, and I know how difficult, difficult it can be, but your, your, your points are well taken, I want to let you know that. And the other thing that I noted was how you started, because our Human Relations Act, and I think only Commissioner Churchill and I were on the Board at the time that that was drafted, refers to the protection of persons' sexual orientation, gender identity, and gender expression, and we were the first. Lower Marion is frequently the first. We are frequently the leaders. So while I don't diminish one word that you have stated or the concepts that you have set forth, actions speak louder than flags. And so that anybody that questions who we are and what we are can take a look at that, how, how we have been leaders, and again, at the risk of being redundant, I think that President Sinai makes a good point, let us take a look at what we can do and how we, how we can do things. But we are at the forefront of these issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bernheim. Commissioner Stevenson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to briefly thank the speaker who spoke on behalf of the group, representative group, about pride and about the issues that we should consider, but I also wanted to publicly thank our, my fellow commissioners who spoke on that, particularly Commissioner Epstein, who set a nice and heartfelt tone about this issue. While I don't have any answers about where we're going to go with it, it gives, it gives me great pride to be a part of an organization that is speaking so advocacy on that, and I look forward to supporting it and moving forward with it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Stevenson. Anyone else wish to respond to public privilege? Okay. So we're now on to public comment, which is the section of our meeting where the members of the public may address the Board on any agenda items. We use the same rules as previously on the public privilege report. Anyone in the room wish to take advantage of public comment? Seeing none? Anyone online, Julie?
No, I'm just.
Okay. So then we will go to, really, the one item on our agenda.
Sorry, can I ask a question? Were there any dialogue intended about the pickleball conversation?
Sorry, we, we heard the comments, we don't necessarily respond to all of them, but thank you. So, so, sorry, we, we don't have a conversation, I indulge you once, but we have opportunity in the meeting for public comment in, in, in public privilege. You have the opportunity. We listened, so, so, that's going to be it. Okay, so the, the, we'll move on to the consent calendar. Does anyone wish to move any item from the consent calendar? I'm going to move that we approved the consent calendar as presented, and that, oh, sorry, thank you, Vice President Kramer. Madam Secretary, will you please call the roll?
For the adoption of the consent calendar, Mr. Bernheim.
Aye.
Mr. Churchill.
Yes.
Mr. Corden.
Yes.
Ms. Epstein. Mr. Grimes.
Yes.
Ms. S. Kramer.
Yes.
Ms. G. Kramer.
Yes.
Dr. Rossman.
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson.
Aye.
Mr. Woodring. Mr. Sinai.
Yes.
The consent calendar is duly adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Is there any unfinished business to come before the Board? Any new business to come before the Board? Hopefully, Vice President Kramer has some new business.
That's right. I would just like to happily announce that we will have a township, or the NAACP and Freedom on Main Line are hosting a Juneteenth celebration on Saturday, the 22nd, from noon to 4:00 at Vernon Young Playground. All are welcome. There'll be lots of entertainment and good times. There's a rain date of the 29th. Let's hope we don't need it.
Okay, thank you, Vice President Kramer. Any other new business? Seeing none, that concludes the business of the Lower Marion Board of Commissioners this evening. This meeting is hereby adjourned.